Review. Planning Commission work plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I will share my screen. There was a memo regarding this topic in your packets that were provided to you, members of the commission, but I will be using a PowerPoint that kind of summarizes that information and walk through that. So again, some of this we've just gone through, but a quick overview for yourself. These are the names of all of the Planning Commission members as of 2024, and there are four new members, as you may already know. So quite a change, and we are in the middle of a multi-year process. So there's going to be some catch up for the new members to make. I will just make myself available to you individually, should you want some one-on-one time to bring you up to speed on particularly the 2024 comprehensive plan update, because that is something the Planning Commission has been talking about since September of 2022. So again, happy to go over that with you, but that will be a focus of next meeting as well. And then the staff, we just introduced ourselves to you. The schedule for the Planning Commission, we meet normally on the first and third Wednesdays, starting at 6:30 PM, unless they are canceled or rescheduled for some reason. Right now, the meetings due to holidays and anticipated activity at the end of the year, those three dates, July, June 19th, July 3rd, and December 18th, we anticipate having no meetings. There will be, once a year, a joint meeting that happens with the City Council, and that's an opportunity for Commission and Council to be all in the room together. At the same time, you are an advisory body to them, and they do take what you have to say seriously, both at this meeting and also in your recommendations through resolution or other action. So mark that, please. That's a Monday night at the Council's meeting, which starts at seven. And then I would also ask you right now to just pencil in a special Planning Commission meeting on May 29th. It's the fifth week of that month. And just we'll remind you over and over again, but that's right after Memorial Day. So please just mark that that would be a meeting that evening, in part because we're going to lose the June 19th meeting. All of the meetings are hybrid. So if you, for some reason, weren't able to be here in person, whether you're out of town or travel or whatever it is, you could be attending live right now remotely. You would just need to let Karen know that ahead of time. So we're ready for that. The Chair and Vice Chair or a Chair Pro Tem presides. So thank you, Mr. Stott and Mr. Combs for stepping in. We do follow Robert's Rules of Order, and then there is a city code section. See if I can get, sorry. See if I can show you the bottom of the screen here. We do have a chapter within the city code talking specifically about the powers and scope of work for the Planning Commission as well. This is what the page looks like on the city's website. So there we go. Sorry. If you were to go to cityoflakewood.us/PlanningCommission, you would be able to find this pretty simply. And then you'll see at the bottom, there's links to agendas and minutes in particular, if you want to be focusing on past meetings, maybe catch up, what have you. Other informational materials are there, and then there's contact information from Ms. Deveraux or myself, should you need that for some reason. You can also see here on the side, there's also these easy links directly from this page, should you want to look at other boards and commissions, go to City Council information, et cetera. This is what the link on our city code page looks like, and that's just at Lakewood municipal dot codes. And in particular, the Planning Commission pays a lot of attention to what happens in these three, 18A, B, and C. These are our land use development regulations that apply either citywide or within those two subareas. You see they're listed downtown or station district. However, there are other code chapters within the titles that you will be seeing reference to, depending on the topic. So at some point, you're going to have, for instance, Public Works staff in front of you, talking about their transportation improvement plan, and that would be referring back to some of the other codes besides just the 18s. But this is what it looks like. If you were to try to search for something, this is a great page to start from. It'll take you originally to the code, but if you start a search, you can choose then, once you see some initial results, to limit your search to just the municipal code, to look just at city ordinances or resolutions, or even council minutes. So there's ways to get to all of those different things from this particular link. The Council has a vision for the city, and this is one of the things that the Planning Commission should be aware of, and it helps inform the process that you make, although of course you are independent decision makers and advisory body. But there is a 2026 vision for the city, which is 30 years after incorporation. And you can see that there on the left, the highest priorities are its history, acknowledging and celebrating community and diversity, economic growth, recognizing public and private schools, environment, municipal services, and then supportive of the military base, of course, JBLM, but also Camp Murray, which is where the governor goes with the Washington Military Department in cases of natural disasters, et cetera. And that's immediately to the south. What you see on the other graphic here is the standing strategic plan that the City Council has adopted. And this is 23 to 24. They will this spring start in on a process that will be the 25, 26 strategic plan. This plan is not the same as code, but it is something that again informs and kind of helps you keep in your mind kind of where council sees top priorities, for instance, and if there is an issue that you're dealing with, if they've already said, this is kind of our slant, or this is how we see this being handled in the city. Both of these are available through this link, and these things are live. I will send you these, this document, and you'll be able to hyperlink directly to these things. So quickly, though, the goals that were included in the 2021 through 24 Council Goals include these here on the screen. Economic development, dynamic and robust local economy, dependable infrastructure, and that could be anything from roads to sewer to power, to telecommunications, public safety, fiscal responsibility, transparency in all the processes that the Council, down to every staff person, conducts, and then having an active community, including in the land use planning. And so again, as we work through this year, which is a key year for the comprehensive plan, which we'll talk about at length, but also the other development regulations that implement that, this is something that is high priority to incorporate public feedback. And so there's going to be, and there already has been, open houses, for instance, on this issue, and you are more than welcome to attend any or all of those. It won't be required, but you'll certainly have plenty of heads up, should you want to. There is a statement on equity that the City Council adopted several years ago. I won't read it word for word, but it was recognizing eliminating systemic racism, and that includes, as you see here, equity in municipal planning. So that is something that they've taken into account. This is just a really quick overview coming from the 2020 census and additional data since then. So this is through 2022. But what you see is, as of now, we have about 63,000 people living in the city of Lakewood. It does have a population that is a majority non-white or majority BIPOC. It's one of 15 cities in the state of Washington that is a majority BIPOC population. The employment rate is about 55%. There's about 26,500 households as of now, and a household could be one person up to a family of 10, up to unrelated people living in a, in a particular housing unit. The median household income per Lakewood is about 65.5, and that is roughly 20% or so less than countywide. So we do have a widespread within the city, but the median, meaning there's half above and half below, is at about that 65,000. Education, about a quarter of the people have bachelor's degree or higher, and we do have about 9% of the city population without healthcare. Continuing with some of the demographics for the city, this is a map that comes from the state of Washington, and it's called the Health Equity Access. It ends up being heal, excuse me. But essentially, it's not just physical health. This is talking about environmental issues as well as others. This particular version of the map and these color codes relate to socioeconomic factors for Lakewood. The different sections that you see here in the city are the census blocks broken out. So for instance, we are sitting just about right here within the Lakewood City Hall. These are the lakes right down the middle of this, of the city. This border that moves its way up and through is I-5. You have Tillicum, Woodbrook, Springbrook, Lakeview, Montevista, up here is Oakbrook. Lakeview is another one as well. But what you see here on the left-hand side is, again, the factors that resulted in these colors on the map. And you'll see, generally speaking, the western side of the city tends to be wealthier and healthier than, say, Springbrook, Woodbrook, Tillicum, and Lakeview. The area up on the northeast side called Montevista is also a higher equity, or, excuse me, a lower quality of life, essentially. That is an area we'll talk about again a lot in the 24 process, because it is affected by what's here, which is Joint Base Lewis McCord and the flight area. So right now, a lot of people live here, but over time, the intent from the city's perspective is that they would actually be relocated, because this is not considered a safe area to have housing underneath the flight path from Joint Base Lewis McCord. This is the city's own equity index map, and again, equity is more than just you might think of in terms of racial equity. You'll see there's all of these different factors that you can look at. You can break down on this map. This is the link, and again, when I send this to you, you'll be able to hyperlink directly to things. On this map, the darker colors essentially equate to a better result, or a better quality of life, or a better standing in whatever factor you're looking at. So equity, accessibility, livability, education, economy, and environment are the different items that you can look at, and you would get a different result here, should you want to dive a little deeper into this information about the city's population. And then the, over here on the left-hand side, is where you would change the map. So unfortunately, you would think if you clicked over here, the map would change too. It doesn't just technologically limited, so you'd need to make sure you're looking at the right map in relation to what you're looking at for data. And speaking of which, this is jumping to livability. So you'll see the color scheme and the results changed from the overall equity score to, in this case, livability. But you'll see these are the types of factors that are taken into account specifically related to livability in the city. Same idea here. This is environment in this case. And again, the colors have shifted around to reflect different things in terms of the environmental index factors that you see there. This shows you where you would see a higher percentage of people of color within the city. So this kind of central area, including Springbrook, including Woodbrook, and some of Montevista, for instance. Then you'll also see on this next one, showing you where the tree canopy is for the city. So this is an issue that will be coming in front of you in a variety of different forums this year and on into the future, related to climate change, related to physical health of the population, related to land use planning. But here you see, right now, the lighter green, for instance, is where there's less than 10% urban tree canopy. The darker areas is where you have anywhere from 35% on up. But that is something that's been looked at by the city to create an urban tree code, and will be the basis of an urban forestry program, which will kick off this year. One more thing here, you'll see heat islands. This is just another topic of information, which is kind of related in ways to the urban tree canopy. So if you go back, lighter green here, let's just look right here. You go to the next slide. This is where it's the hottest in the city. So shocker, less trees equals more heat. But it's also affecting those same areas in the city where the heal score, the equity score within the city showed that there is a disparate way of living between these parts of the city and some of the others that are, for instance, the Oakbrook, and then over again on the west side. So this will also be addressed in terms of climate change planning, the urban code, urban tree code, excuse me, and the urban forestry program. So what the heck does the Planning Commission do? I know that you know at least some of this already, but to make it very clear, there's actually within the city code, Chapter 2.9, a list of the issues that the Commission has brought before them. So there's housing. This is related to CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, or HUD home information. And so in the next few meetings, you'll start to see some information on that. There's an annual housing report or an annual activity report you get from the Community and Economic Development Department, just to let you know where permit activity is and where growth is happening in the city. Looking at the comprehensive plan, which is going to be what you're living and breathing this year at least. And then there's also just other annual reviews that happen of zoning and regulations through annual comp plan cycles. And then there's also doing research and fact finding on behalf of the City Council in particular. They will, on occasion, come to the Planning Commission and say, we need more information. We want more of your perspective. We would like you to do a deeper dive into issue X. And that could become, you hold a series of public meetings. It could be you form an ad hoc committee. It could be asking the city staff to commission a report or a study and bring that back to you. So that will happen on occasion as well. Coordinating with other cities and county planning agencies, if that makes sense on a topic, and then providing to that progress report to the Council. In this case, that would be, again, at that joint meeting that will be happening in May. In addition, it's a matter of the Planning Commission to assist with economic development and redevelopment of the city. So again, coming from you, recommendations to the City Council, but also to staff. So for instance, this last year, we had our Economic Development Manager come to you with, or come to the Commission with proposed changes to the multifamily tax exemption program. And that has now moved its way through Council after the Planning Commission provided feedback to staff, and they took that on to the Council. The other thing that has happened is, in the past, the city of Lakewood had a separate Transportation Advisory Board for staff. That, I can't remember how many years ago now, but that was combined with the Planning Commission. So you actually handle some transportation analysis and recommendation as well. So you will get several times a year, Public Works staff in front of you to talk about, for instance, the six-year transportation improvement plan, where they're saying, okay, we know because of our 20-year horizon and the comprehensive plan, these are the things that we've gotten successful grant results for, or these are the things where we're assessing fees or getting general fund dollars to build in the next six years. And they would bring that to you, get your feedback, and again, that's incorporated into what goes on to the City Council. So before I get into the actual work plan for this year, are there any questions on everything I just went through very quickly?
Tiffany, can I add a couple of things?
Sure.
Couple of quick points. One, Lakewood is really sometimes described as a barbell community with very wealthy people and very poor people in a very small amount of class. And that's been an issue with the City Council in previous years, wanting to build up economic development and provide for greater job opportunities and better types of jobs in language. The other piece is that we have a very high rental housing market with lots of rental units. And so the City Council did agree to a rental housing program, where we do an inspection process on every five years with all multifamily apartments. That has made a big impact upon improving housing quality. And as a part of your housing report, I would imagine Mr. Jeff Gumm, who's our housing manager, may provide you some additional information on that. But that's kind of a key point to sort of monitor in, in your time on the Council, on the Planning Commission.
I wanted to ask a quick question, and that was, when you were mentioning the strategic plan and the council vision, is there going to be a council retreat that will revisit or consider making any revisions?
Yes, the planning, excuse me, the City Council will be doing that in, I believe it's February. They're going to be looking at the 25, 26 biennium.
They often tie the strategic plan to what the budget will look like for the next coming year or so.
Tiffany, we've presented our work plan to the Council. Will that be in February or in May?
Actually, it's next Monday night that it is being brought to the Council. That's being done by staff, by the assistant to, or I think he's called the assistant to the city manager. He's presenting all of the work plans for the year, and then the following week, the City Council will deliberate if they need to, and then accept those work plans.
Any other questions for Ms. Tiffany? Thank you, Tiffany.
All right. So I'll just walk us through then. This is the work plan that is going to the Council next Monday night. You've already done the first one. Hooray. The work plan you're doing right now. Hooray. The updated goals, what I'll, what I will do for you is, once they do have the session that Ms. Talbot was just asking about, and have an updated set of goals, provide those to you and walk through them if it makes sense, if there's things that would apply specifically to things that the Commission will be dealing with. That will happen first, second quarter. The annual housing action plan and consolidated housing plan, those are the things that Mr. Gumm will be bringing to you later in the first quarter of this year. The city of Lakewood is in what's called a consortium with the city of Tacoma, because of the amount of dollars that would come from, for instance, the CDBG program to Lakewood. It's based on population. Tacoma is obviously bigger than Lakewood. They have more money coming to them, and the thought was, at one point, given the amount of funds that would come specifically to Lakewood, it made sense to partner in order to get more results for the total amount of dollars. So Tacoma and Lakewood do this in tandem, and both jurisdictions actually review and then approve those plans. And so we'll talk about it with Mr. Gumm. He'll take it to the Lakewood Council, but that will also be discussed in Tacoma as well. Another thing that the city has is an annual process, and this will be probably either late first quarter or second, where the community groups that are involved in shoreline restoration within the city, as you know, there's a number of lakes and creeks here, will come in and provide an update to the Planning Commission on what they've been able to accomplish over the last year with those restoration activities. And if there is something that either our Parks Department or our Public Works Department have done that relate to this, they will also be here to provide that information to you. What has been asked of this, by the City Council of the Commission, is once you hear that information, if you feel any amendments are needed to the restoration plan that's adopted by the city, you would recommend those amendments, and then it would go forward to Council for review. It may be that you hear from the groups that you'll hear from, and you feel like the shoreline master program and the restoration plan still fully comply with state law. There's no need to update. Perfectly fine if that's the decision by the Commission. And then the biggie, this is the one that will go all the way probably for the Planning Commission through the end of June, and it will be on every agenda between now and then. You will have at least one, but you may decide to have more than one public hearing on this process. But this is a 10-year review that's required under state law of the city's comprehensive plan, and then the associated development regulations. There is always an annual plan, or annual cycle. So you will always have, as part of your work plan, people, the city, coming to you with a request, for instance, to rezone a parcel, or to add a new level of density in a zone, or to change something from a commercial to a residential zone. And then you may also have, coming in that cycle, a recommendation either from the city staff themselves, because they've dealt with a particular code section, and it needs a tweak. There's some issue that has come up through permit review. Or it may be that a change in state law requires an amendment to a regulation. Those types of things will happen late summer. It'll come to you, and then you would recommend on to the Council. But this 24 review is more than that. It is a front page to back page, fully review required by state law of what's in the comprehensive plan. So the last time this was done was 24, 2014 and 15. And we're doing this, as I mentioned, we started at the end of 22. We're just about to the point of bringing things to the public, including this Planning Commission process of an entirely rewritten comprehensive plan with some significant changes, particularly with housing. And so if the newer Planning Commission members, if you're kind of like, I need to catch up, and where do I spend my time? I would request that you would spend time on the housing issues. That's where most of the discussion will happen this year, probably in your hearings, as well as amongst yourselves, and then with the Council. The state law changed about how many housing units per lot the city has to allow happen. And it's quite a change for some of the zones in the city. So that is probably the top topic. The other thing, though, is we do have some climate change, changes to rules, as well as some rules related to housing that affect parking. And that would be the other big topic, I would assume, will, will be before you from public testimony, et cetera, is whether the city should change its policies down to its regulations about where people can park, particularly in residential neighborhoods. So again, as I said at the very start of the meeting, if there's anything that you would like some one-on-one time with, I'm more than happy to meet with you, but I will refer you as well to the recorded sessions where these things have been talked about, and the materials, should you want to do it on your own. Once you are finished with this process, and assuming it happens by the end of June, it will then go on to the Council. They, in times past, have sometimes sent things back to the Commission. So if, for instance, something comes up in the City Council's discussion among themselves or with the public hearing, where they feel something's not fully baked, they need additional information coming to them before they vote, it may come back to you, and they may have a specific question they want you to look at, or they may have a specific task they want you to accomplish, and then return that back to the City Council. That's happened a couple of times in the last few years. So I wouldn't be completely surprised if that happened with this, because it is such a major change regarding housing. Once they have it, though, the idea is that they are taking action probably by end of September, and by state law, the city needs to have adopted this new version of its plan by the end of the year. So once that's in place, those other type of annual cycles that'll be in front of you every year, that will be what it's based on. The next one that you'll see on an annual basis, this will come to you in second quarter, is that Transportation Improvement Program I just mentioned from Public Works. So again, it's saying, we know the projects we want to do over the next 20 years, within the next six, these are the ones we have the funding secured for, and these are the ones that maybe were completed in the last year. These are the ones we've now added because new funding's become available. And then it's an iterative process. You're having a conversation with Public Works staff before they take it to Council. Urban Forestry is a new program. It's something that is an outcome of the Tree Code actions that were taken in 22 into the early 23 by the city. And the intent is, over the next few years, actually, to do this kind of in a phased process, to say, okay, we have our municipal code that says, if you're wanting to build something, this is how you have to treat the trees onsite, or this is how you have to replace them. This is going beyond that to say, we are encouraging, whether it's a business or an individual homeowner, to look at tree canopy, tree coverage, and, and help us improve it as a city. It's the city itself looking at public parcels and figuring where there may be an opportunity to increase tree cover. But at this point, we're kind of, we're not even at the stage where the Council has seen the plan from staff as to how to proceed. We're having internal discussions among various departments to set us, or set up an action plan that the city manager and then Council will review.
I would also add that when you get to that, the Urban Tree Forestry Program, it's also talking about an operation and maintenance component on an annual basis. That's probably between $400,000 and $500,000 a year. So there, there is a significant cost aspect to this, which the Council so far has agreed to move forward with.
The next piece, I mentioned multifamily tax exemption, but that is a program that many jurisdictions in Washington now have. And if you break down the name of it, it starts to make a little more sense, maybe. This is saying there is an opportunity on multifamily projects to have a tax exemption for a certain amount of time. This has proven to be a really effective tool for jurisdictions to bring in more affordable housing and higher density housing, probably in the last 10, 15 years. And what we've done in this last year with the MFTE program is update the code to meet current state law, but what wasn't touched yet was what are called the residential target areas, and that's where this program would apply. So there's maps right now of where a developer can come in and say, hey, my parcel's here. It's within one of these RTAs. So I'm going to proceed with this application for a tax exemption in order to have a more affordable upfront construction process. Those target areas are subject to some review this year, so you'll have that in front of you in the second half. And then we have already in place, in the comprehensive plan, the climate change chapter. That is being changed in part because of state law, because now the state legislature has said you need to ramp this up beyond what Lakewood had voluntarily done over the last few years, to now require planning for climate resiliency, is what they called it. And there's a number of changes, not only to the energy and climate change part of comp plan, but transportation, housing, et cetera. So that's going to be a multi-year process as well, and it's, I kind of envisioned this one kind of like an octopus. You've got a lot of different things that this climate and resiliency requirement package will affect with city planning. Then, believe it or not, just about when you've done panting your way through the 24 comp plan process, we will start on the 25. And that, again, is that annual call for applications. It's a much leaner process. And it may well be that because of what's happened in 24, you won't get any applications for 25, but it'll depend, because those are applications that can come from private parties as well. But it'll depend, because those are applications that can come from private parties as well. And then the last piece would be the, the annual development regulations. And those, as I mentioned before, that's, misspelling was caught, or there's an issue where the timing is needing to change for a particular permit review. Or because of the legislative session, there's a new bill that into, went into effect, and we need to change our code in response. So that'll be towards you at the end of the year as well. So that's your work plan for this year, any questions on any of that?
It's that one. It, it can be done. One of the things I need to ask, however, a lot of this information is, has been, has been presented to the planning commission previous meetings. Do the new members have access in their, in their iPad to the previous minutes?
They should be there through the link to the website, because all of the minutes are listed there, if they're not actually in, already uploaded to their iPads.
If not minutes.
And Karen is saying that they should be uploaded as well.
Every time Karen, for example, sends us out an invite schedule, also all the attachments. Obviously, that, like this time was just a couple of attachments, but and the pages will be anywhere from seven to maybe a couple of hundreds. So I encourage you all to take a look at them prior to that way, but if you have any questions, of course, we'll all ask the presenters at that time. But that, that information is already being covered to an extent, so we can go back. You know, when you've got nothing to do, you can just read previous attachments. Miss Spear, anything else for us?
Oh, yes, we do. Yes, we do. So again, you will hear me say the 24 comprehensive plan update probably 5,000 times this year. But this again is a page on our website that you're welcome to go to when you would like to research further. And it is, the link is right at the top of the page here, just says city of Lakewood, or dot U S slash periodic review. And then you would get to this page here. What you can do with each of these buttons is click down to particular sections on the page. But what you'll see here, and this is referring exactly to what Chair Estrada was just mentioning, there are links to specific public meetings that have been held to date. There's links to the steering committee, which is community members that have been convened to be an advisory body to you. They are meeting right now, and they will bring your information to you about the comprehensive plan package. And then there's also the previous planning commission and city council meetings here. And if you go into that link, you will see not only the videos, but the materials themselves. So you can access all of that there, and hopefully it's clearly labeled to where you'll, you'll know exactly what each one would cover. And then I won't even go through all of this, other than to say that we, what we're trying to do is getting through a 10-year review by the end of this year. And now every five years, that is going to be kind of an implementation, check in with this, with the legislature to say, we're halfway through our 10 years. This is how we're doing. So that's the new cycle that the city will be operating on. And that now, Mr. Chair, is it.
Again, do we have any questions from this sphere?
I've had one question.
Paulus?
These are, thank you. Very nice, the plans that you have laid out, but they're somewhat small. Do you have any larger ways of displaying them? Or are they scalable on a, on a large screen computer?
Are you talking about the, the stuff that I just put there? Yeah, yeah. If you were to open this up live on the website, it's going to be as big as you can see it on your screen or as big as you want to print it out. Yeah.
Any other question? No. What's next on our agenda?
What's next is simply to say, I don't know if any of you want to introduce yourselves individually, you kind of already did. But other than that, the other thing that would normally happen at one of these meetings is the city council has a liaison that is specifically appointed to the planning commission. And that decision for this year hasn't been made yet, which is why you don't have anybody here tonight. But what would otherwise happen is that person would have prerogative to stand up and provide you an update to either things that you had provided recommendations on, and they've now taken action. They're going to let you know what happened at the council meeting if you don't already know. But maybe they have an issue they want to bring to you and have a discussion about. So that would be an update that would normally be at these meetings from the city council level. Otherwise, it would be staff providing you with other little updates if there needs to be anything, and just reminding you, for instance, when the next meeting will be. So next meeting will be on the 17th, two weeks from tonight. And that will be where we're going to try to give a high flyover of what's going on so far with the comprehensive plan discussion for the commission. I will do my best to really focus in on the areas where I can anticipate you will need sufficient prep work to answer, for instance, discussion that comes up in a public hearing to point out those areas that I think will be hot topics at the council, to the ones that the state legislature is directing the city do specific actions on, and we really need to make sure we comply with. But as I said numerous times already tonight, this is a front-to-back review of the city's comprehensive plan. And then after that, we'll get into February, and you'll start to see some other guests come in with topics. I would, just for your own planning purposes, these meetings can go to nine o'clock or later, but often we're done by about eight o'clock. So just a very rough reference. But that really will depend on the topic, if there's a public hearing or not. Just trying to, in a soft way, say that this is a pretty short meeting today.
And as Miss Spears indicated, so at the end of the meeting, we'll have reports from staff, from our liaison, and from ourselves. If you all have something to present to the, to the commission or to the public. For future reference. So do you all have anything this evening? No? Again, welcome to you all. Looking together. Anything else for us?
Nope, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Got to hit that gavel though.
Well, I know, but I, I want to give everybody an opportunity to say whatever they want. No, no, no. Your turn, thank you.